Tuesday, February 26, 2019 to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Christensen. Cunningham McNally.
Here.
Ryan Egg.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Cumbier.
Here.
Stress.
Here. Cunningham's absent excuse. Please all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Group of posting.
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center, the Cambridge Post Office, United Community Bank, and the Village website.
Very good. Legal. Public appearances. Anyone here for something other than an agenda item that would like to speak? Now is your chance. Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which are the minutes from our January 22 meeting. We had to skip the first February one because of weather. And operators licenses for three different people.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Under discussion. Minutes look good, and I think all three of these were, the police said, no record, right? So, no issues. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Reports. Under my report, I just want to thank publicly our staff for doing a bang-up job on snow removal. They've been out there many, many hours under tough conditions.
Two hundred twenty hours in the last pay period.
Oh, boy.
Between all four of them.
But...
It's supposed to be what, eighty, any piece?
Between four of them. Water and sewer were helping out.
Yeah, yeah, Dan's been out and Lee.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to say thanks to them. I mean, they've, it's just been tough with the snow and the ice, and they've been salting and scraping and moving extra snow, and so it's... And residents, too. I've noticed sidewalks have been actually in pretty good shape, all things considered. So, thanks to, thanks to people for getting out and getting their sidewalks and fire hydrants and all that. So, it's been tough. I'm ready for spring. I don't know about you, but...
I agree.
So I really don't have anything other than that. Oh, I guess, under a real quick report, the fire truck purchase has now gone through. In other words, the lease agreement was approved by the leasing company, PNC Bank. So we got all our Ts crossed and Is. I mean, it was a forty-five-page submittal to them in the end. It was just unbelievable, all the stuff they asked for. But we got it all in there in time, and Murray Bailing obviously helped out with all that. And all five communities got their reports in and things, or their minutes and whatnot. So, it all went through, and as far as we know, everything's in good shape, and so the order got in. Friday's the deadline, and so I think we made it. So, that means we get all the discounts and the order will be placed on March 1st. So that's all good. Library board, February 13th.
Let's see, we had our new member. Oh, we talked about the building funds, and now we're looking at investing the dollars from the building fund into some CDs. So we were going to take a look at the two banks and what the rates were at the two banks and just invest it in CD, because we felt like we wanted to earn more than just what it is in our checking account. And we probably won't need those dollars for a while, so we felt that, I think, I think we agreed on a two-year term.
Oh, wow.
Patty, I think, is what we decided on.
It was a while. But the rates are starting to go up on those CDs, so it's good.
Right, so...
Actually making some money.
So the, let's see, we had a, we had an update to some of our, an update to one of our library policies, and that'll be posted on the library site. We just talked about some maintenance things at the library. We talked about updating the inclement weather policy for, and abiding by the school district. Well, we'll take a guide from the school. When school is closed, most likely the library will be closed. If two library members or library staff can get in, they will still open the library, but because most of our library staff are from out of town, most likely if the buses aren't running, then the roads are bad enough that people wouldn't be able to get any of the... So if the schools are closed, again, most likely the library will be closed, but you can always call and double-check. And I think that was it. Patty, do you think anything else?
Okay.
Very good. Any questions for Paula? Thanks for the report. We will move on to the water and sewer committee, where those, those minutes weren't in the packet, were they?
They were not.
No. Ted, help me out.
Well, Blue Jay Way, we discussed that in depth on, we need to get Town and Country out there and shoot some elevations, and then we can figure out, try to figure out what we need to do.
No, not Blue Jay Way. You're thinking, you're thinking that drainage along...
Bluebird.
Bluebird Pass. Yeah, and behind Bluebird Pass, along Highland. Right, with, with Sully, yep.
The second big one here is the laundromat.
Right.
And a few years ago, we, we let the owner put in a smaller meter. And I found out that you could know that we should not have done that. It, it, the state regulates that, and it goes by the number of fixtures that are going to be tied to that water system, and it needs to go back to a two-inch meter. And so we need to, we need to move ahead on that here.
We'll have to pursue that.
And if the owner's going to do it, I, my feeling is we'll, we'll get a plumber, we'll get Jim Lean out there, and they'll change the meter along with Dan, because this is, this is a serious thing here we're talking about. And also, what are we going to do?
Was that discussed at the water and sewer board?
Well, we discussed the fact that someone had come to us asking for, to reduce it from a two-inch to one-inch. We approved that, but then the plumber never did report to us.
Right.
So it went for a long time without being built.
Long time as one inch, and it cannot be a one-inch meter.
Right, but, well, we, that's going to be for the next discussion.
Right.
But Ted, you did agree to look into that, and you have, so we'll have to bring that up at the next meeting.
Right, and then, well, the third thing that we talked about, a little bit about, is the bills for the, both the hotel and the laundromat. And we only got information initially on the, on the laundromat, but then I found out that they're in arrears on the hotel for six or seven thousand, too.
Okay, well, I know the owner came in at an earlier meeting and questioned the meters, and so those were sent in and checked, and they both checked out.
But he still should have been paying his bills monthly.
Right, right, but that, we'll, we'll deal with that there. We also did discuss and approve a policy for forgiving sewer charges if there's a leak that people had no control over.
Or like if, if it was an outdoor faucet that was on?
That one we already had.
Oh, okay.
Figured, but this is more like if there's a leaky toilet, and they didn't know it, and, you know, it was fixed.
Oh, okay. That's great.
And we only forgive a portion of it.
Sure.
Right.
But...
It doesn't come up very often, and it's on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
But we now have a policy that's...
Good.
I believe that's it for water and sewer then. Yeah, the minutes, I know Vicky's been ill and things, so the minutes didn't get... But they'll, they'll be in the next packet. Personnel committee, February 25th.
All of the items that we discussed are a, an item on the agenda for tonight.
For new business.
They're all under new business.
So that was a meeting just last night?
Yes, just, yeah, actually yesterday afternoon.
Why didn't I catch that?
Because it was kind of last minute.
Okay, okay.
It did go out, though, with the information from, with this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I guess I did see that, but I didn't. Okay.
And it was at 3:30 in the afternoon, so that might have been
Okay.
why you weren't able to attend.
Right, okay, I probably could have made it. Okay, and you said they're all on the agenda, so we'll move on. Village office updates. Administrator, clerk, treasurer, Lisa, what do you have?
Busy month, a lot of year-end things. We had the workers' comp, audit, unemployment, WRS reconciliation, some reporting to the state on tobacco licensing and housing growth in the last year. W2s, the state WT7, the W3s in the federal, uploading all the federal tax stuff, 1099s, 1096s. We did go through all of our vendors to see who truly needed 1099s, get those all updated. Working on the audit. They came in and did some preliminary work. We did have a discussion with Paul Franz from Baker Tilly. We pushed back the audit work a little bit to give us more time to get caught up on things here. If we would have kept on their timetable, we would have been paying them to do more of the pre-audit work like we've done the past couple of years. Paul was in agreement that we should push it back, let us get the work done, so we know what's going on, too, instead of them doing the work.
And telling you what's going on.
Yeah.
Paying them to do it.
I'm glad they agree, because originally you were asking, and they were like, no, it has to be now, so I'm glad they...
So we talked, it worked out well. We're working with him now, getting the PSC things ready. They will be in March 25th through the 27th to finish up the PSC report, to start the initial audit. Week of April 15th, they'll be in to do the full audit work. Last year, they had given the report in mid-May to the Audit and Finance Committee. It will be pushed back a little bit later, but Paul is fine with the timeline and...
Good.
So we're working on getting all that stuff together. The bank switchover went very smoothly. They worked with us on the ACHs for both payroll and utilities, the first times to get the new processes done with that.
Good.
Tax collections were complete, the final exports and settlements. Working on bank reconciliations. Invoicing, we're going back through July of last year. Nothing had been invoiced out since that time, so catching up on invoices from last year and getting caught up for this year. Entering the 2019 budgets into the system. Have been working with the chamber on the contract, which is on the agenda. Dog and cat licensing, River Architects. They came down last week, did some measurements and stuff, so they're getting together the bid packet on that. As you know, Vicky has been out some, so, you know, shuffling duties around. Dan will be gone March 18. He has knee replacement surgery, so he'll be out, so we've been prepping for that and how we'll cover with that. Obviously, snow plowing, cleanup, removal. The guys have been working hard and adjusting things as they go where, you know, if we see issues, adjusting and doing a difference. So they're getting a good system, system down, timing.
Lots of practice.
Mm-hmm, yes. Finalizing, we had to do with insurances and so forth, the renewals. We did get our packet today of all our renewals. Working on creating and cleaning up our inventory lists for property and equipment and so forth. Getting that all updated. Working with Town and Country. They're working on the true-ups, so getting them information for that. The assessments for Highway PQ. We should have had them already. They have to redo some measurements and so forth. They don't know that they'll get us those until the snow is gone. So once we do get the final numbers, it will come before the board for final approval before we can send out invoices for the assessments. But we've had a couple closings and so forth on houses there, so we have to work off the estimate to start with and move forward. Also, working with them, you'll see in the bills, we did have the bill to the county for Highway PQ. So we're working with Town and Country now to go through our invoices to see what we can bill back to the county that they'll pay for half of our expenses, but they wanted payment in full, and then we'll invoice for, for our share, so...
Oh, is that how that works?
Yep, instead of deducting from the bill.
Figures they want the money.
So, working with them on that. So, luck going on.
Yeah, apparently so.
In addition to the day-to-day stuff.
And thanks for covering for, you know, when Vicky's out, you guys have to cover, and I know Barb had to cover when you were at a conference up north.
Vacation, yeah.
Vacation, so she had it all alone, but thank you for that. A couple of quick questions for, for the staff. One, one is fun, funding for the fire truck outside, is that outside the levy limit, or can it be considered a capital expense? I know you, you sent that question to...
Yeah, we asked Greg and...
Haven't heard back yet?
Yes, we did hear back, and no, it is not.
No?
No.
It's not a capital expense?
We're leasing it, we're not purchasing, and it's through the...
Well, we purchased half of it and leased the other half, or actually, two-thirds we purchased.
But Greg's response was pretty much, no, it is within...
Wow, okay, I'm surprised at that.
Yeah, we're not the owners of it either, the fire commission is the owner.
Well, as a group, we are. The Fire Commission owns it, and we are the, all five communities make up the Fire Commission. So, that's why we have to borrow the money.
Greg said no.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not listed as a Village of Cambridge, yeah.
Asset.
Asset.
Good point.
It's a Fire Commission asset.
Okay, okay, very good.
Yeah.
And then the 2% dues, I saw that that was...
Yep, we'll get those done.
You got that information, you're going to get on that. Okay, real good. And Barb, thanks for getting...
Those are due for another month, we have time.
There you go. Thanks for getting the, that reconciled all at 2018. I noticed you sent out that.
Yeah. I got the budget comparison out.
Oh, that's what it was.
The reconciliation.
Okay, the budget comparison, thank you. And I, I still mean to sit down with you on it, because I had some questions, but I just haven't had time, but, but thank you for getting it done.
And those will change as we're sending out invoices, are dating back to 2018, and there's a couple checks.
So there'll still be some adjustment to that?
Yeah, so some things are still coming, you know, going for 18.
Okay, we'll wait for the...
Trying to get that all cleared before the audit.
Okay, real good. Thanks, Lisa. Any questions? Yeah, Mark?
Yeah, I know two of you have spoken about this, it's snow plowing. And the guys are doing a wonderful job. Have there been any complaints by the residents of the Village of Cambridge regarding our services of late?
There have, you know, each snowfall, there's been, you know, the first one, the timing was off where some of the streets weren't fully cleared till later in the afternoon, and people were calling in. So we sat down, myself, Dan, Wilbur, how do we adjust? And, you know, so they're working on their timing and the length of the snowfalls when they come in and do things. You know, some little complaints that they're taking into account, you know, cleaning out somewhere. Corners may be too high where visibility is bad, so the cleaning of Main Street was an issue. And being a state highway, we cannot keep snow piled on. So they were using the snow blower to blow in. Instead, they are using the tractor, scooping it, moving it out quicker, getting it off Main Street. So we're addressing them as they come in, and they're both newer to it, so it's like, not that we have to do it how we did it in the past, but here's how we did it, how can we improve? What will work better?
So nothing serious, just little things here and there, so, good.
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you for the update. We'll move on to bills. And we have a whole group of bills, because we didn't meet February 12th, so there was a first run February 12th. There's a second run. There was also property tax settlements that went out. Then there was a first run for this meeting tonight, and then a second run that we have before us. Or is this a total, what we have before us of those two runs?
That's just for these two, the...
Right.
Yep, so for D and E are on the signature sheet. Yeah, the first three have all gone out.
Then those are all pre-approved. The, we approved those...
You and I have talked after the meeting that we would send those bills out, and I would just provide a listing of what was sent out.
Right.
And then the tax bills had to go out.
Those had to go out.
So the first three, A through C, have gone out.
Okay.
The signature sheet there is for D and E.
Okay, so just for the record, I'll read it. First run February 12th was $45,411.57. The second run for February 12th was $682,682.32, 37 cents. Then the property tax settlements was $535,917.32. And then the first run for tonight's meeting was $75,595.96. And the second run for tonight's meeting, the D and E that we're basically approving now, was $95,000.
Total, the second run was $19,66.
So the total then for A, for D and E are $95,562.01. So I'll entertain a motion to approve all those bills.
I'll make a motion to approve all said bills, all bills in said amount.
I'll second.
Okay. Under discussion, do we have a grand total? It's over a million.
The first three were all sent out already, so the ones in...
So really, it's the ones that are...
Just the ninety-five.
We're just approving the ninety-five thousand.
Okay, very good. So motion second to approve the nine, discussion.
I have two questions. Town and Country, I noticed that you just talked about it briefly, but we had a $1,045 charge. Is that done now with PQ? Because that was 2018.
No, they're still working on the assessments, getting together the assessments, having to come out, do some measurements, and so some final stuff. They had met later with the county on a final checklist, so I think one of those bills may have been the final checklist with the county. There is a little bit of work left for the county to do, but they will still be working on the assessments and preparing the final documentation for us.
So they have not been paid in full?
No.
Okay.
So there will still be...
Okay. Number two, there was a check written to Detroit Salt, and it was for $3,200. And this kind of ties back into the weather, not that I'm preoccupied with it, but are we doing okay on Salt? In talking with Dan, is this...
We have used a lot. We'll check what our budget is. We do have 25 ton left on reserve, put aside for us if we need.
Okay, that was going to be my question, too.
All right.
What we're doing. Okay, good.
I know that's something that we, we chopped in the budget, though.
Yeah, using money from last year.
Yeah, we had some leftovers.
And purchasing upfront.
Yeah, we're just more upfront, that's right.
Yep.
So, but we have used a lot this year.
Yeah.
So, Wilbur and I talked about it today. We're going to keep an eye on where we're at and if we need to order so that we have it
Right.
Come, you know, November, if we, and not having to wait until our new contract in January.
Okay. Paula, you said you had a question?
The, the Excel class? And payment to the Cambridge Community Library, did they just pay for the class and we're reimbursing it?
They paid for it, for all three of us, and then we reimbursed them.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the bills? Hearing none, we have a motion second to approve the bills, $95,562.1. Roll call, please.
Trustee McNally.
Yes.
Ryan Egg.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Christensen, Cunningham, and Stress.
Yes, pay the bills. Move on to unfinished business. Collaboration agreement between the Village of Cambridge and the Cambridge Area Chamber of Commerce. If you are here for that issue, feel free to step up to the, to the microphone. And Lisa, maybe you can take the lead on this, explaining where we're, where we're at. I see we have...
Yeah.
We have the contract in the packet.
Yeah, so I had met with the chamber, taking, you know, the motion from the board, met with the chamber. Some, I think, clarification, and we tried to write, I tried to put it together the best I could, taking both sides. I think clarification needs to be made of expectations, and so, you know... We keep referring to it as economic development, which the chamber does in a very soft way. You know, they're more promoting, and we'll be attending these functions and so forth and bringing information back to us, but they're not going to be out making cold calls to businesses to move to Main Street.
True.
You know, so we're trying to put together as best we could, melding those two. If it's truly what both sides envision, that's for you to decide, but I did the best I could trying to meld those two ideas. So, you know, if you want to add a little care in, you are, you know...
Do you feel like we're at a point where we can approve this, or do you think it's still kind of a working project?
It depends what both sides feel, you know. If your expectations as a board are that they're going to be out doing cold calls and bringing businesses into town on that basis, that may not, that's not their area of expertise, and
Right.
we don't want to set either side up for disappointment, you know. So clear what expectations are on both sides is, you know, what I feel is important.
Right. No, I, I think we all realize that there wasn't going to be that aspect of it.
Yeah.
But, but the general promotion of the community, not just chamber members, obviously is important through very, you know, the Jefferson County Tourism and whatever other avenues that you work through that you would promote the village through that. And then look at other opportunities, too, that are out there for, for promoting the community.
So as far as the contract is, as it's written now, our concern is that one line that says we will pursue business leads and feed them back to the village. We don't, we're not, we're not capable of doing that.
Okay, that is in there, yeah.
Yeah. We're six volunteers and two ten-hour-week employees. We don't have the capability or the expertise to do that, so we would like to have that removed from the contract if possible.
So, I guess my concern there would be, or where I think of that, is, is if you're out representing Cambridge at all of the things you're participating in, like WDEC meetings, or Jefferson County Tourism, or things like that, if you hear of business leads in that capacity, we would expect you to bring those leads back to the village. I'm not talking independently, necessarily independently going out and soliciting, or going out and trying to uncover, but if you're out and about and you hear about somebody who has an interest in something, bring those types of leads back to Lisa. That's, I think, what, to me, that's what the expectation is for that line in the contract.
Maybe could, I agree with you, Paula. Maybe that could be reworded, because when you hear recruiting, you're thinking that's an act of going out, looking. Maybe it's more bringing leads to the village or something.
And, or just combine that with that section that talks about which, that we will participate in these organizations. Add that to that part.
So where is the recruiting line?
The 3B.
Promote, oh, by recruiting, okay.
Yeah.
And when I wrote it, it was with that same thought in mind, but, yeah.
So maybe we could work on rewording that. My concern was, was the dollars. We, we went to the annual meeting for the chamber, and the 2019 budget breakdown was handed out, and I didn't want to say anything at that meeting, but I sat down with Nicole, because she wrote the, at the Hometown Bank. She's the one that is doing the finances for you.
Yeah, she's the treasurer.
The treasurer. And she helped explain it a little bit, because what, what I saw was $5,000 for payroll and $5,000 for promotional, coming from the village to the chamber. But then in expenses, money going out, there's only $3,000 listed for advertising and promotions. And I thought, you know, where's that other $2,000 going? Plus, some of those promotions, I assume, are for chamber members. So I would think that, that line...
The budget that you saw is not, I would not say it's, I guess I'd say it's not complete. We haven't really, I don't know how I want to say that, embraced the fact that we'll be getting this money until we have it in our hands, so we haven't really sat down and worked out how we, how we plan to spend it. So it's not showing up accurately in that budget.
Okay, well, and Nicole...
And I know that the two of you talked about how you would like to see it reported and what her plan was to do that.
Right.
Hopefully that helped a little.
It does. And Nicole helped quite a bit with basically the same explanation, that she could break out what would be village promotion versus chamber, and with labor as well, and she said... And she said it wouldn't necessarily reflect in the budget, but she's tracking everything separately.
Right.
So any, anything that's for the village will be tracked as a village expense, and then, you know, there'll be the invoicing, and then there's the quarterly reports that we'll be getting. And those will give us the detail of what was done on behalf of the village versus the chamber as a whole.
Right.
And then we can see that we're getting our ten thousand dollars for. So I'm trusting in Nicole and you folks to do what, you know, what the contract's asking and give us what we're paying for. But I just, yeah, maybe this budget could use a little work, that it's-
Sure.
It's hard to pull that out of these numbers.
Right.
And so, and my concern would be the five thousand dollars that you're saying is going to be used for marketing and advertising, making sure that that's going to advertise everyone in the village, not just chamber members.
Yes.
So, so as you're doing your monthly reports and saying this is what we used those advertising dollars for, we'd be expect to see samples of those so that we can make sure it's abiding by that holistic Cambridge view.
Chris, you had a question?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. Thanks for being here tonight, I appreciate it. One of the questions is, is there any verbiage in here? I'm scanning it through, and I didn't see anything about grants. Not necessarily writing grants, but that was one of the-
There was something in there about it. It's in our proposal.
Okay. Can you, do you know the specifics of that?
Okay. In three A, it does say identify and communicate grant opportunities to the village and all members of the chamber.
Okay.
Again, with the expectation knowing they're not grant writers, but if they hear of grant opportunities, they could bring them to us, and-
Yeah, and that's our first Grow Cambridge meeting in March.
Okay.
Is somebody that will talk specifically about grant opportunities for everybody.
Okay.
Which is next Tuesday here.
Yep, we want it like that.
Jason Scott from Connect Communities. So I think you're going to see a lot of things that we do, maybe I should say you won't see them show up on the budget, such as this first meeting next week. I mean, we don't have any money, but we're setting that up. We're going forward. It won't really cost the village or the chamber a lot of money. Jason doesn't charge, but we're hoping that that will lead to other venues like that coming off of the first one, because he has so many resources and so many connections that he will lead us to, and it'll, hopefully we'll have a good turnout and community-
Is that the one that we had canceled because of the snow?
Snow, yeah, it was rescheduled for next Tuesday.
Yeah, there was quite a few people that turned out for that first one.
And that is part of what Linda was doing under her entrepreneur cafes. She was having speakers come in. So we're already going down that line with or without the grant. I mean, we're here to help the entire community. Anything we can do to help fund promotions will be greatly appreciated, and we'll extend what we can do, but I mean, some of this, we're forging forward with or without, I mean, I feel it's important, we feel it's important, that we bring some of this information to the community to try and help grow the business sector of the entire area, the community. I mean, there are so many resources out there available, it's just, it's unbelievable that we aren't utilizing all of them. I mean, I even heard at this last meeting that there's grants out there for sidewalks. I mean, I don't know where or how, but I mean, that was mentioned, it's like, really? Grants for villages and stuff, I mean, let's pursue this stuff, let's get these guys in here and talk to them, and, because that helps everybody in town, if we can fix the sidewalks, you know, that are on even on Main Street or something like that. I mean, that's just, that helps everybody that comes into town and shops. So we're going to take this very seriously. We appreciate whatever financial aid you can give us. I said right from the beginning, I would rather that the village would hire an EDC full-time and go full bore. I mean, I really wish, but I know I've been setting enough meetings to know that this day and time, that's not possible, as much as we can wish and hope, it's just not going to happen. So we're going to try and spend what little resources we have as well as we can, and make it stretch as far as we can and give you the best bang for the buck we can. But I'm not going to here and overpromise you what we can and can't do, because there's a lot we can't control, but we'll control everything we can.
And seriously, ten thousand is not that much money. We understand that, you're not going to-
It doesn't, boy, we're not going to take any tips on it.
But it's a start, it's what we can afford, and it's better than no dollars.
It is.
Yes.
It definitely is, it'll help. Because we're running on as tight a budget as we can, just like the village is. I mean, there's no extra stuff out there being frivolously spent. And I know some of us will do everything we can, and there won't be any reimbursement for the majority of us.
Thank you, Dave.
Chris, did you have more questions?
I had more, oh, go ahead. Just to follow on to that, it's more contractual, how this reads, and it states that the village will issue a check of the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to the chamber at the beginning of each quarter. So as you know, we're already two months into this quarter, so I don't, you know, we committed a certain amount of money, but we have to take a look at the, it may be semantics, but the dates and how that falls out.
And it does have with the first check being issued after the agreement is signed.
Okay.
So that first quarter would be, be cut once the agreement is signed.
Okay.
And then after that, the first check run of each quarter.
All right, okay, very good.
So by the time we get it done, the first check might be five thousand dollars.
Get it done before that, yeah.
Right, we're going.
Yeah. But we don't want to cut the check before the agreement is signed.
Yes, and that makes sense, absolutely.
I understand, yeah, you're meeting on March 5th, and I won't be able to make that, unfortunately. And then the 19th is your next meeting?
It's been moved to the 13th.
Oh, okay, well, maybe I can, no, I'll be gone then still, too. Well, at any rate, at some point, or maybe someone else from the board-
Yeah, anybody's welcome to come.
Can attend, I want to stay-
The first meeting of the month is our regular board meeting, and then the second meeting, which is the fir, we meet on the first and third Tuesdays. The second meeting of the month is our strategic planning meeting, where we'll pick one or two topics and really sit down and hash those out for a while.
Yeah, so the 13th, that's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
So that'll be village board, then. So we won't be able to make that meeting either.
Well, they're in the mornings from eight-thirty to ten.
Oh, okay. She's speaking about the chamber, village, or the chamber board meeting-
Chamber board meeting.
But not the presentation.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Okay.
The fifth is his thing.
The fifth is the Jason Scott meeting from Connect Communities here. We don't have one set for April yet at this point.
No, I guess.
Okay. Mark, you have a question?
Just wondering if it's possible-
Between the chamber and between the village, if that paragraph three B, if we couldn't just, for purposes of efficiency here, have that read, share all possible leads with the village, with businesses seeking to relocate, move to Cambridge, would we be all right with that? Would that help them to get this? Because it sounds like we're really close, and if you could then do that, then we'd be able to-
Yeah, we just wanted the understanding that we're not actively going out and searching for businesses to come here. We'd like to, but we don't have the capacity.
Okay, are we all right with that?
Well, it's not necessarily they're actually looking to move to Cambridge, because then it's a done deal, they just talked to us. But they're looking for a new location somewhere, and if the chamber hears that there's some business looking for a loc, you know, they can promote or let the village know so we can promote the village.
I guess what I'm asking, if we're all right with this-
That's very close.
You know, then the two of you-
We have motion that if we come to, you know, I know where we're coming from.
Right, right, we can have it, we're going to, yeah, the motion can just include making an adjustment to line to three B.
Three B, yeah.
Per discussion during the meeting.
Yeah, that works.
The only other item on the contract that I, I don't know if it needs to be mentioned or not, but the Madison, Mad Rep, we've gone as far as we can with them, so there's really not a relationship to manage with them anymore. Unless the village finds more money to hire them, we can't really do anything else with them. So I don't know if that, if you want to keep that in here or just remove that.
You exhausted the free services they offer, basically.
Right, we're, they're asking us to pony up thousands of dollars now, so.
Ah.
And Karen did meet with them several times on her own time and no charge to the village.
Yeah. But we really have kind of tapped them out as far as they're willing to work for free. So I don't know if you want to contain, I don't know if we want that to stay in there or if-
I guess we scratch that one, then.
How you want to manage that.
I'd say just remove it, if that's the case.
And other than that, I didn't, we don't have any other questions or points to be made on the contract.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make it. I'll make a motion that we approve the contract that has been written, subject to modifications to paragraph three B and possibly the Mad Rep inclusion between the Village of Cambridge and the Cambridge Air, Area Chamber of Commerce.
Very good.
Well, second?
Second, okay. Any discussion that we haven't already had? I should have started with that, but that's right. Yeah, this will be a new venture. Hopefully, we can work through all the-
Yeah, we're pretty excited about it.
Spots, and I think it'll be good for both of us, so.
Good.
Yeah. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
I'm really excited we're able to work something out, because something for the Village of Cambridge, some representation for the Village of Cambridge is better than none, which is what our alternative was. So thank you guys for stepping up and helping us serve that, serve that role.
Yeah.
Thank all of you.
Very good. So we have a motion second. It is money, so roll call, please.
Trustee Brianic.
Yes.
Colin Beck.
Yes.
Kumbir.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Cunningham, McNally.
Yes.
Struss.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight B, TIF feasibility study, report from Ailers.
Brianic's here.
And Todd, I don't know if you want to step up or if you want to just remain back. You're there?
I'm doing stuff first.
Okay, okay, very good. I know Greg couldn't be here tonight, so thank you for filling in.
Yep, so my name's Brian Rimmer, and I've been in front of you, I believe it was last year, for bond issuance at that time. But tonight, I'm here to talk about the TIF feasibility for what's labeled as TIF V. You should have this in your packets. It's got our logo and Cambridge's logo on it.
Yep.
Labeled as, it is in the agenda. So a developer's requested the Village of Cambridge should consider the use of tax incremental financing or TIF dollars to facilitate a proposed development. The estimated increment is about fourteen point four million dollars, with the developer requesting an incentive of one point eight-five million dollars. So first, when we're looking at the feasibility, we want to make sure, okay, as this is planned, can you actually do this TIF? Is it within laws? So first, if you're looking at our memo, under the use of tax incremental financing, we run through the certain tests that you need to go through. So you pass the mixed-use test based on it being a mixed-use TID and being under thirty-five percent of residential. So that breakdown of land use is page one after the memo, so if you're more interested to see how the numbers bear out from each lot and development. Secondly, you pass the twelve percent test, which is the combined base value of any new TID with the existing increment value cannot exceed twelve percent of your equalized value. So running the analysis on that is the base value of any new TIDs cannot exceed sixteen point seven million, and the base value of this TID, proposed TID V would be fifty-five thousand. So well within your limits there with this TID. So then, secondly, after we see, all right, legally, can we, can we do this, we look at your financing options and the actual, you know, starting to play ball, if you will, with the numbers. So they're requesting the one point eight-five million. In addition, we recommend you should include the allowance for administrative auditing and review fees that the TID will incur. In the cash flows, you'll see this listed as, under the expenditures, as administrative costs year over year. Those are TID-eligible, so we recommend you include those within the TID. And then also, just as a note, that you need to do a project plan before the TID, as you did with your previous TIDs, and so then we run our initial scenarios. So we take essentially, based on the estimates provided by the developer, that this will eventually bore out about fourteen point four million dollars of increment value, and we actually reached out to the assessor, and the gist of what we received back, and we have some numbers borne out for you in the memo, is that actually the estimates were pretty conservative. He would, he would estimate, the assessor, that is, they would actually be higher than that fourteen point four, so you'd get more increment than that. So just, that was, there's commentary on page three of the memo on what the assessor said, and there's further numbers in detail there. So going back to scenario one, which the numbers are laid out on pages three and four after the memo. The one point eight-five million incentive is paid out from 2022 to 2031, and it's projected to generate, the TID is projected to generate sufficient increment to pay the Pago essentially, so he's putting upfront money, you're paying that back over time as certain development happens. And then essentially, when you could first close the TID would be when that increment value gets over the outstanding debt, and then also your, any negative balances that you would have. So you'll see a yellow box in each scenario, but specifically scenario one, page four, we have that at 2031, you know, should these values hit. So, which would be right after you're done paying off the debt, so very successful TID in that scenario. Scenario two, we looked at, okay, what if the development only hits a certain amount? So we did a seventy-five percent sensitivity analysis, and then tried to rework the municipal revenue obligation when you're paying that back over a longer term. And what we found there is that, you know, you pay off that incentive a little longer to 2035, then it's still able to fulfill itself, the TID will project, you know, to generate enough revenue to pay off that Pago. And then, however, it's just four years longer than scenario one, which, you know, kind of bears to reason if you have less increment available. With that said, I think the biggest thing is what we recommend with any Pago situation, especially any development incentive, is that you have a development agreement, and some, under the other considerations in the memo, some things that we recommend would be making sure that you tie in your repayments to certain thresholds of development. That would be, you know, something that would be worked out in the development agreement process. And then you have prioritization of which, what costs are paid first, so those administrative and upfront costs to create the TID, you'd want to pay those first, obviously, to make sure you've made yourself whole. And then also consider, like I said, kind of making sure that those incentives that you're going to promise kind of bore out to, one, what he, you know, as he develops, but two, that the public improvements will happen as well for those sites, not that you get stuck with it midway through the process, for example. So those are listed in the other considerations section of our memo. Then lastly, the next step would just be for the board to determine whether or not you want to pursue the TID, and then looking toward a public hearing held before the plan commission, and then final action would rest with the joint review board, which has happened with your other TIDs, so similar to the previous TID's process. The timeline there would be recognizing, you know, your base value for one-one-twenty would be the September 30th of this year. So if you're starting to look at timelines, you want to make sure that you have time to do a development agreement. And then, within the plans provided by the developer, which he could speak to more of, we did have construction dates in 2020 and 2021. So that being said, I can answer any questions you might have on the charts or the memo.
Got questions, yeah, Mark?
Your sensitivity analysis, you went to seventy-five percent?
Mm-hmm.
Did you go down any further than that?
We can, we did not.
Okay, you're working for the village, right? Where's the punk wood in this? And when I say punk wood, it's a term in my industry. Where, where's the soft stuff that you can poke your finger into that's real mushy? You don't want that. Where can this go sideways?
Poor development agreement. So that would be something that would not, you know, you promised to pay back something without having certain, you know, those thresholds sought after. So you promise certain things and let's say development is slowing, but you've obligated yourself to repay, let's say, a certain amount of principal per year instead of based on the increment that you actually receive. So you're not getting your money from the tid and you're paying out of pocket from the general fund or the utilities or some other source that you have available funds for.
But wouldn't a Pago automatically set that up? You wouldn't even have that in the developer's agreement, would you?
Ideally, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that's, you want to tie it to a development agreement and you have to
Okay.
in the Pago, but you want to make sure that that agreement establishes those boundaries.
Okay. Okay. You know, we've had other history with tids and also just incentives from the village perspective, not, not including the other parties. And the developer's agreement was, we thought, fairly ironclad, but when the rubber hits the road, if there's a problem with development, what, what enforcement authority do we really have on the developer's agreement? We usually end up modifying that developer's agreement to give the developer more time to, to meet the terms, for instance. And, you know, if they just say flat out, well, we thought we could make this goal, but we can't, what are you going to do about it? You know, that's, it's tough. For instance, asphalt on the road, the second, you know, second layer is supposed to be put on by a certain date. They don't meet that date, what, what authority do we have other than pulling the plug on the development, which is to no one's advantage?
Right.
You know, I mean, it's
It still would be essentially not, there wouldn't be the risk of the, the money side in, in the case of your previous
That's true.
tids, where the only thing that you would essentially be waiting to be paid back for would be the upfront cost to pay the tid, which we have estimated at about like twenty-five to fifty grand. I don't, it's, it's in there.
Okay.
And that, that would be the only, you know, we have to wait for some sort of repayment on that in terms of waiting for that increment to make yourselves whole that way. But it's written in the project plan that you would want that to be paid back first, which, you know, I kind of made mention of that prioritization, that that's mentioned in the development agreement too, that you don't get paid until we pay ourselves back.
Right.
So.
Okay, so what you're saying is that really with this form of, with the Pago, the, the risk is, as low as you can expect, but
Right, because you're not
The developers
I believe in, you know, what I've seen from the other tids is there are some other upfront costs to get the ball rolling, if you will, put simply. Where in this scenario, there, there is none outside of the creation tid costs, as long as, you know, those certain things and understandings are made within the development agreements, such as like public improvements and the, the site developments, you know, all those things that you can foresee.
Chris, you had a question, comment?
No, I was just saying that develop, I was thinking that developer, development agreement can be as explicit as we can make, need to make it. If it needs to go to that length of, the second layer of blacktop needs to be put on an X date per, we can make it as explicit as we need to.
Correct.
Yep, Mark?
This question really is for Paula, because you brought a good point up last meeting, I think when we started talking about this, or maybe a meeting before that. And that is that this starts going on to our property rolls, but we don't get anything out of it, but it's still going to affect what we have with the Fire and EMT Commission. Can you elaborate on that and ask this gentleman? I just want to confirm that understanding.
So, so any improvements that are seen out there are going to add to our equalized value? Our equalized value is what the basis is for what our portion is to pay for EMS and Fire and Department Services. So could we write, I'm assuming we could write, that sort of pay ourselves first? We could write into the developer's agreement that, that we would want to take off the dollars to cover that equalized value first?
That could be
Not that someone else would agree to it, but, but if we, so, so how do we, so that's the protection that I'm worried that we can't do, because right now we're underwater because we've got a couple of agreements where, where we didn't make provisions for that. Our equalized value went up because of the improvements on, on two of our property, on two of the developments that we have. So our portion of what we had to pay for Fire and EMS increased, but we didn't see the corresponding increase in our revenues, because that's going back to pay developer's agreements or tiffs, incentives.
I would say, yeah, that's a very good way to look at it and I would, I would have to see numbers in, in order to bear that out, but yeah, I, I would agree if that's, you know, you're not getting
You know, we're going to provide services and we're not going to get paid for them.
Yep.
But, but we could make provisions in a developer's agreement to sort of say, we get paid, we could see if we could try and estimate what some of those might be and then, and then
Right.
Build that in first.
Yeah.
Which would then extend the length of the time for the incentive payback, I would guess, most likely.
Yeah.
Depending on the significance, right?
So you wouldn't do it through the tid, the, the TIF itself, you would do it through the developer's agreement?
Yeah.
Right. So I think the tid would still have the same payback, that would be over and above, be outside of the tid, that you would work that agreement. A dollar figure, that would be a separate contract, basically. It'd be outside of the tid, so it wouldn't push the length of the tid, correct?
Uh, no, it, it would be a matter of two, of what's tid-eligible with, with your services that you're discussing, so I think there might be a legal portion of that, but it would bear itself out in the development agreement in terms of looking at, okay, how are we recouping these costs? So that would, and I would actually defer to Greg on that, he does have more experience in terms of what the legality portion of that might be, so. But we can get back to you, definitely.
Okay, I would envision it as being a separate outside of the tid.
But my, but my, where I figured it would take us longer to pay that back is because, because instead of that money going back to, to pay back that incentive or that, that one point eight million that he's looking for, whatever, we keep him a portion of those dollars that he gives us, we're giving, keeping a portion of that Pago.
I'm saying we'd go above that, ask for more, in the developer's agreement.
So he pays his taxes plus then
Yep.
plus then he has to give another payment to cover the cost of the equalized value.
If that's something
I, I see where you're going.
If we can work that out.
Okay, yeah, okay, I get it. Good.
Several ways.
This is why we have conversations, right? I get it, I get it.
Sorry for our mistakes.
Right, it, it has painted us into a corner to some degree with our path. I mean, it's great to have growth, development, but when you do it through tiffs, we don't see that revenue for a number of years and yet our expenses are going up.
Right, there is, there is a lag with
There's a lag there.
construction time, then obviously tax roll time.
So it has, as Paula pointed out, it, it has hurt us.
But that is, it is all borne out in, in this feasibility study in terms of what construction year and then when you actually see the revenue. So you, so you'll see that and that's why you, you'll see the structure of the repayment time concern, so.
Okay, very good.
I think
If we take a step to move on to a, a public hearing, we're, we're not necessarily committing to the, to the tid at that point, I mean
No, you're not committing until you actually would be, I believe it's at the point, when you're ready to meet with the Joint Review Board, you have to have your resolution in hand or the approval in hand at that point. So it would be after the public hearing.
Okay, so we could decide tonight, for instance, to move forward and set a public hearing, but we're not necessarily approving, obviously approving the tid at this point, no. Todd?
Thank you for your thorough analysis.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
Goodness.
Aylers does a good job.
Brian, thank you, very good, unless there's other questions for Brian?
I'll, I'll stick around for his
Okay.
questions as well, so.
Okay, very good. Yeah, thank you, I think you've done a very thorough job and I've looked through all this and the numbers look good, first they're based on assumptions, but what else can you do? So.
Some additional questions?
Yeah, well, Todd, we're going to go back to what we've, the dead horse that we beat, we're going to beat it some more. And that is, is there anything more that you can give us on this development in the way of what, what are we going to see there in the way of types of businesses or types of buildings or anything? Because we know that when, I've been hearing from a number of people in the community that they're very concerned about moving forward, not that they don't trust you or trust us, but they don't know, I mean, we have very little
Well, I think we've been, I think we've been very concise with the, the zoning classifications that we've requested to be overlaid and, you know, we haven't asked for any adjustments, so we're just basically saying we've reviewed all of your zoning options as is and we've taken the BH out of your ordinances and propose to overlay that on this development.
Okay.
And, and your ordinances are very clear about the types of businesses that are allowed in that zoning district.
True, in, in a general nature, but yeah.
They're pretty specific.
Yeah.
If you really go on a business-by-business activity, there's not a lot of gray area in your, in your zoning information about that zoning district.
About that type of business, but then it's all conditional within, within that. Each, each zone, you know,
Right.
permit will be a conditional use permit, so it'll be based on just that particular business once it's determined
Correct.
what it is. But you're right, it still has to meet the general terms of our, of our zoning. So, so that, I mean, that's my only hesitation in all this. I, I think it's, it's a wonderful idea, we definitely want to develop that parcel, I think it's a good thing for the village. It looks like this might be the only way to make it happen with the tid. We seem to be coming to that conclusion anyway. But I still am a little concerned about what exactly are we, are we buying here without, you know, seeing it? And, and I know the rest of the community feels that same, we'll hear quite a bit at the public hearing, I'm afraid. Any other questions or comments?
If we go forward with this, are we going to have this, this, this whole area modeled? And modeling is, you know, water runoff and stuff like that, is it going to work? And is it going to, what, how is it going to affect the other existing landowners? Because that's going to be a big deal.
Mm-hmm. Well
We're going to pack this room full.
Well, in, in our discussions with Town and Country prior to this,
Yeah.
you know, we, I think we have a good level of understanding what's necessary to create self-sustained site. So I mean, the obligation is on us to create a design that keeps the stormwater and, and appropriately expanding the utilities to make sure that there's no off-site burden or issues created for anyone else.
And, you know, Dane County's tough too with their, they, they have one of the toughest ordinances in the, in the state as far as stormwater runoff and so they'll have to meet those requirements. It is still a concern though, because I mean, even though there's retention on site, it eventually does have to flow downstream, it's got to go somewhere. And Dalen Creek has its issues with flooding already.
I mean, if I lived in one of those, those houses adjacent to, in just the sample map that says stormwater management right there, I would be concerned, just because the history of the water that they've already had. So, you know, I, I'd be concerned as one of those residents.
Yeah.
Well, like, you know, I mean, I, I don't set that criteria and neither do you. I mean, that's, that's done by, by people above our pay grade to make sure that all, all of the water and the displacement and containment of that water is dealt with. Or we're not issued the permits necessary to move forward.
But you're right there.
Yep, and there's considerable wetland on there and I know those you can't impact, so there'll be, there'll be retention there, so. Other questions for Todd?
I guess at a certain point though, and I, I asked this question last time, was what are we, when are we going to find out? Because we're using public funds, the types of businesses that are going to go in there, is it going to be a quick trip? Is it going to be a McDonald's? There's going to be three, three or four restaurants? I'd really like, you know, we have to have some idea of what's ultimately going to be there.
Well, very, I mean, very rarely do you have the luxury of pre-selling a development where you can go public with all that information before you even receive your approvals. So I'm trying, I'm trying to, I, I mean, I'm respectful of what you're asking of me, but we don't have a development approved for me to be bringing completed contracts to, to bear.
So
And it's totally irresponsible to talk about what-ifs, because everybody's going to be unhappy then.
But as the approval process goes on, we, we should be informed at a certain point what's ultimately going to end up there, correct?
Well, yeah, but I mean, that, that's not going to happen, it'll happen on a limited basis.
Based on zoning?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Well
You know, I don't have, I don't have an approved zoning overlaid on this property or a TIF, so to be representing a type of business potentially that could be there is totally irresponsible.
So Ted
That's why, that's why it's specific to target your existing zoning district without asking for any modifications.
We'd have to go through the whole pro, he'll have to go through the whole process as far as, you know, come to the Plan Commission
Sure.
with a plan, you'll have to obviously get state approval on any buildings. So there'll be quite a process going through before that's ever to the point of us approving it. So at that point we'll know. But unfortunately, we won't know before that, you know, until that process is started.
And, and I think from our standpoint, we don't, we don't mean to keep pressing you on this, but this is what we're hearing from constituents, you know, you know, curious minds want to know.
Right.
So we, we feel obligated, you know, to the folks that voted us, voted us in to try to press for an answer, but ultimately we understand that it has to go through these wickets and you have to go through the same wickets and
Right.
So, so one of my concerns in just looking at this plan and based on what was in Aylers' report of a seventy-two unit, residential unit, that's a hundred and, potentially a hundred and forty-four people going in and out of one entrance. So, so, and then plus then those businesses having cars enter and exiting. I'm not sure one entrance and exit out of that space is sufficient and my concern is if another entrance was needed, there's no other place to put it, but again, out onto Highway twelve and eighteen, and I don't know that that would be granted. Right? So, so that would be a real big concern for me if you were, if a unit that size were to go in there with just that single enter, entrance and exit.
Based on our preliminary discussions with the DOT, that's why they had mandated the only way that they would approve the traffic plan for this development is if we go through the effort to spend the money to make the improvements on twelve and eighteen and one thirty, one thirty-four. So there's an expansive off-site expense in traffic improvements.
And I hear that, but it's still a single entrance for a hundred and forty-four people plus all the businesses in and out one road. I just think that's a lot of traffic.
There's people that study those sorts of things and I had the same thought, but if you consider like a frontage road or something in Madison, if you have, say, like Flom Road or something, if you, that's your one entrance on, onto Stoughton Road and you've got multiple businesses and residents and things that all funnel onto that one intersection, somehow, occasionally it gets backed up, but usually it, it works. But it has to be a controlled intersection, there's no way
Yeah.
that that could be, you know, just a two-way stop, I mean, you'd have people stuck there forever. So in a way, I think a light there might be a good thing for the community as a whole because it's going to slow people down coming in from Madison as well.
What's the DOT is going to say about a stoplight on
They're actually requiring
That's what they're requiring.
That's why you have the added expense.
Right, that, that's why he's coming to us, because that's
Correct.
one point eight million dollars to do that.
Yep.
Yeah.
With turn lanes and everything. It's actually two stoplights, correct, Todd?
Well, what they're, I can't speak to what they're finally going to mandate, because-
Oh, okay.
Until we've got everything finalized, they're not gonna give their final input. But originally, they told me to budget for the worst, which was two fully new improved metered intersections.
Okay.
With ingress and egress and-
Right.
-deceleration lanes and turn lanes.
Yep, so that hasn't really been finalized, but it's-
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
Okay.
Okay, so Sue, yes?
Can I add my two cents word?
Certainly.
I'm a senior citizen now. And Cambridge desperately needs over 55 housing. Is that something that could be incorporated into your 72?
It's a possibility, I mean-
Because we have people, senior citizens, driving to Fort Aggins and Jefferson, Stoughton because they have senior citizen community rooms within apartment buildings. They need to do all these things, different things. And Cambridge really needs something like that.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't be opposed to that and I haven't, I haven't pigeonholed any of the specific businesses for my needs, right?
I would like to see a developer.
Yeah, I'd be, I mean, I'm more than happy to try and push that direction for part of it if, if that's what I'm hearing is wanted or needed.
Well, and really, the 72 units seems to me a little excessive for what our needs are, although the new apartments that are, are being built are filling up fairly rapidly, so that's good news. But I'm sure at some point, we might saturate that. But, but as far as maybe senior, there could be a, a demand there still. So, something to consider. Okay, what's the desire of the board here? Do we wanna move forward to a public hearing or are we not ready to make that step? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion. We proceed to the next step and if that is the public hearing, to get some citizen input regarding this proposed development and this TIF that we would have to enter into.
I'll second that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, as Mark said, I think the idea of getting citizen input on this at this point, we aren't committing ourselves to anything, so to me, the public hearing is our opportunity to hear what everybody has to say.
And you can, I'm sure you can remember, Steve, that when we talk about development in that particular area, people are gonna be real concerned about it.
Oh, I've been hearing it, Rick.
Yeah.
Yep, we all have.
Yeah.
So, you know, having our engineers at that meeting, that public hearing would be valuable. And maybe your own engineers too, to address some of those concerns, yeah. So, and Brian, this, we're okay, I mean, this is the next step we decide, right?
Right.
The pub, moving forward to the public hearing.
Yep, and I can have, Greg and I will follow up with Lisa and talk through it, so.
Okay.
That would be a public hearing before a plan commission.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Any other discussion on that motion? Okay, hearing done, we have motion in a second to move forward with the next step on this proposed TIF development to hold a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Lisa, do we have an idea on when that public hearing would be able to be scheduled?
We'll have to check timing. It, probably the April Plan Commission meeting.
April?
Yeah. Don't know that there's time, if, there's not time to go for the March. April would be then.
I, yeah, I think that, like I said, I think you wanna get moving early summer at least, you know, if it does move forward past the public hearing on-
So, you think April gives us enough time to do that?
That's September time for the-
Yeah, yeah.
-preface.
Yep. Okay, figure on that.
Based on April, we'd still be on a potential 30-day or 90-day schedule for the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Does that work? Okay, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
And Todd.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out. Have a good night. 8C, agreement with the Town of Christiana concerning the purchase of the Pizza Pit property. I think we can dispense with this fairly quickly. As you know, we've had this before, two different times and referred to Attorney Mary Bailing. She had some, what I felt was legitimate concerns. Those have now been addressed and she has basically signed off on what you see in front of you. She, she doesn't see any other, other concerns. The last one was about whether depreciation on the property would have been considered in, as an expense. And that's now specifically listed in there that it will not be, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Cambridge Community Fire and EMS District Agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? You know, obviously, the, we are grateful to the Town of Christiana stepping forward to do this. They're basically agreeing to buy this property with their own funds. That saves us from borrowing funds to do it. When the time comes that the Fire Commission needs that property to expand the fire department, the fire station and EMS, then they are agreeing to sell it to the Fire Commission at the price that they paid for it, so.
What kind of timeline do you think it's gonna be for?
I'd say no more than five years. I think when we're gonna be looking at this.
Or less.
Or less.
Yeah.
I say no more than, could be less.
Yep.
Yep, for sure.
Yeah, it's needed.
They could use the, the space right now, they're telling us. So, we're, we're talking about it. Yeah, Mark?
Steve, who's the owner of the Pizza Pit?
Well, the owner, the owner of the business or the property?
Not the business, the property.
Uh, Pami Sekhorn, she owns the VP there. No, she owns the business.
Steve Martin?
He owns, yeah, he owns the business, Pizza Pit. He leases from Pami.
Okay.
The purchase would be from Pami.
Pami owns the, the house behind as well as the, the-
Correct.
The Pizza Pit. Pizza Pit building.
Yes, correct.
I guess the reason I'm asking, and I don't know if it makes sense, but I appreciate anybody who's selling their property at what they paid for. That's what I'm hearing.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wondered if it made sense for us to have a letter where we could sign it as, you know, trustees for the Village of Cambridge? Because this property is gonna be more identified with Cambridge than Oakland or Christiana. And then we would just sign off on it, just thanking them for selling it at cost.
Yeah.
But thanking that person, yes.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
Well, I think that should come from the Fire Commission.
I, I get it.
Well-
But we could do it as well.
We can do it as well.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah. No, it's a good suggestion. Now, Pami's a, you know, even though she doesn't live in the community, she's been very community-minded and she was on the Economic Development Committee when we had one and, and has done what she can to help the community. So, yeah, I, I think that's very appropriate.
Can you prepare a letter and then maybe we could sign it, you know, the next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
You can sign for Kathy.
Very good. Well, and at the next meeting, I won't be, I won't be here either, so.
Well, okay.
Whoever.
Two meetings from now or something like that.
So. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve this agreement with the Town of Christiana. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
So, what's the next step with that? You take it to the Fire Commission?
Uh, no, we'll have to each of the communities, well, and I believe the others have signed it, so once we sign it, um, yeah. It's kind of a rotating document.
It's a next Fire Commission meeting.
I think it's, I think it's, in fact, I know it is. It's up at Town of Lake Mills, so it has to physically be picked up and brought here and signed, so, so we'll, we'll get-
Make sure you do that before you go on vacation.
Okay. On my to-do list. I've already talked to her about getting that there.
Fire Commission meeting?
Uh, April 11th, but I was, April something, I don't know the exact date, so.
All right, thanks.
Very good, we'll move on to new business. Discussion, possible action regarding the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan. I believe all we need to do at this point is to set a public hearing, correct, Lisa?
What we need to do right now is we'll acknowledge, we've received at the acknowledgement letter that's in it. Once the plan is done, we would pass a resolution adopting the plan so that in the future, if we want to apply for any grants or anything, we can. So, the first step is just, you know, yep, we've done it, we've looked at it, we acknowledge it, and then we'll pass a resolution when the final language.
And, but we do have to approve a public hearing on it too, correct, or no? I thought I read that.
We may look for the resolution. I know the first step is just this acknowledgement.
Okay. I thought it read somewhere that there's a public hearing.
Yeah. You know, and right now, we don't have any plans or anything for-
Yeah, here, after that, please follow the steps below if you want to adopt the plan. Doing so, ensure that your minister will be able to apply blah, blah. Conduct a public hearing at an upcoming board council meeting.
Yeah.
Be sure to allow for citizen comment. Following the, okay.
So, this is still a draft. So, we're acknowledging, we received the draft. This was our opportunity if we wanna make any changes or anything.
If we wanted to make any changes.
Oh, I see.
Once it's finalized, we will have the public hearing and the resolution. But at this point, it's just acknowledging, yep, we don't have any changes to it.
Well, the one error I did notice, Table 611, it says we do not have an administrator. The village doesn't, and we do, in Lisa.
Mm-hmm.
It's on page, what is it? It's the second page, top second page, right up, right after the letter.
Oh, yeah.
So, and we used, we used to actually have an emergency management contact person, if you would. It was Dwight Christensen was our, was our emergency management, I don't know if we call him staff, it wasn't like staff, but liaison or something.
It says staff is, police staff is-
But we really don't, therefore, we really don't have a staff.
Right, staff is actually hired, yeah.
But it did, it did bring up a thought for me and that is, do we want to maybe have someone designated as a contact person for, for emergency management? Maybe we don't. Maybe having Lisa as our administrator is all we really need, but, but at one time, we did have that in Dwight.
He was, he was our contact too for this process.
Right, for this process.
Right.
He was, he was our representative on that, on that committee, yeah.
Right.
The group that was putting this together.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, oh, but, and with Dane County too, because we went through the whole process with Dane County and I, I helped out with that.
Yeah.
So, really, that was all, he was involved and then once that process is done, then he's off the hook.
Yep.
So, we really don't need another person to replace that. Okay. And I know we don't have staff.
Yeah.
Or a community planner.
But we can make notes on here.
Yeah, that, we do have-
The administrator.
I think it's a good idea.
To have a emergency staff, an emergency management contact person?
Well, to go through with this and-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
No, and-
Is it one for Dane County also?
No, we, we, we went through the whole process with Dane County.
Okay.
I was involved with that and it's probably been two years now that it's been passed, but that went on for probably two years. Went to a number of meetings on that.
Should we have somebody, a point person on this?
I think having Lisa's administrator really, the idea is if there is some, you know, flood or ice storm or something, we just have a contact person.
If we have a flood or ice time, Lisa need, Lisa has everybody's contact information.
Right.
Right, Lisa knows who to call, she knows from a county perspective who to call, so I just think, and she'll call us in and give us all the jobs to do. So, y'all better be ready.
Well, somebody's got sandbags.
Also, storm, stormwater management, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to take a look at that again too, because this deals with that.
With flooding, yep.
Yep.
Yep. Exactly. Okay, very good, then I'll entertain a motion that we approve this plan with the minor change of-
No, that we acknowledge it.
We acknowledge it.
And we asked for the change mentioned about the administrator. That's the only change, I think. I don't know that I necessarily saw anything else that we needed to change.
No.
And that we move forward with a public hearing.
Yep.
Okay, can we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Barb, did you get, I kinda crafted that loosely.
To approve the acknowledgement with the change for administrator and move forward with a public hearing.
You got it?
Pretty good.
Good.
That was a short one.
Very good. We have motion second to move forward with this. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I have a 9B, options for improving the downtown business environment. I'm gonna be very brief with this because I know we have other things to discuss. I asked for this to be on there. I've been hearing from citizens and also I've had my own concerns about our downtown business district and how we're just so frustrated with getting storefronts filled up and how there's vacant storefronts.
Yes.
And, and the condition of those storefronts too, not just the fact that they're vacant, but they, they look bad. How else to put it? Paper up or just, you know, maybe just stuff stored in there and whatever. So, I've looked into it and there, there is a possibility of, of having what's known as a vacant storefront tax, that you actually, a community can actually charge a business an annual fee for having a storefront that's empty. And it might seem kinda punitive, but in light of the fact that it impacts other businesses downtown.
Surrounding businesses.
And the community at, at large. The property values are kept down when there's vacant buildings.
Mm-hmm.
So, our tax revenue from those buildings is kept low. We've had a number of those reduced. And so, we can make an argument that this is taking money out of the pockets of our residents and so they should replace some of that money through a tax. That tax could actually go back into economic development and help improve the overall community. Community Arlington, Maryland, so it wasn't in the state, instituted this in 2017, $400 a year, so it wasn't like an extreme tax, but something to get people's attention. When they first levied this, there were 17 empty storefronts in their downtown and at the end of 2017, they had just six remaining. So, apparently, now whether that tax had all that impact, I don't know, but it seemed like some kinda success story. Other communities are considering that, you know, quite a few others have it, others are considering it. There's obviously a downside that it's kinda setting up this, instead of being collaborative and helping downtown businesses, you're being more punitive and, you know, but you're also looking at, you know, we've tried other avenues with some of these business owners and we're not getting anywhere, so maybe that's the next step. Other possibilities are what's known as a vibrant downtown ordinance. Some communities have tried this and that's more, it's, it's requiring a reduction in rent, which is kinda interesting concept, that short-term leases, so you wouldn't require them to go into, you know, a five-year lease that are reduced, but a six-month lease perhaps at reduced to get a business in there and get it established. So, those are things other communities have tried. I haven't really researched what's legal in Wisconsin yet.
I was gonna say in Wisconsin.
Well, now, hang on where I'm going with this. Well, now, hang on where I'm going with this. So, what I'd like to do is, you know, maybe pursue this further, but maybe have some group of people, a committee of some sort, that would look at what avenues are open to us, you know, what's the different possibilities, and what, what's legal in Wisconsin, that if we, you know, want to go the ordinance route, or a tax route, or just what can we do as a community, or as, as a village board, I should say.
Do you think the storefronts cleaned up at least?
To, to, yeah, to, you know, maybe just even the idea of unkempt property. I know we already have that as, in our ordinance, but that's more exterior, if someone doesn't mow their lawn or something, we can go in and mow their lawn for them and, and charge them.
But we should, we should take a look at that.
But that could be another.
Because there, there is a couple, there is a property back here, or a couple of properties back here that are unkempt.
Right, right. So, that might be another possibility. All, all I want to do tonight is just throw the idea out there. I've been doing a little bit of research. I think there's, there are some opportunities that we can pursue as a board to, to perhaps motivate downtown businesses to, to do something. We've been sitting, some of those have been sitting for years as an empty storefront, and it, and frankly, it, it hurts the other businesses downtown.
It does.
And, and I've been hearing from them, so, so I feel like there's something we, we should at least investigate. So, just throwing it out there, it's not, it's just for discussion and consideration, and I'd say not at our next meeting, because I won't be here, but the one after that, I'd like to propose some sort of a, developing some sort of a committee to, to research this.
Along with storefronts in, in the front of the building, we, we should take a look at the back of the buildings also, and see what we can do to make improvements, to make their look.
It could be, it could be more inclusive, yep.
Yep.
Sure. So, Mark?
Lisa, you had something you were gonna say.
Yeah, I was asking, you know, are those things.
Are they legal in Wisconsin?
Legal in Wisconsin.
Right, and I haven't done that much research.
Yeah.
But that's what I feel the committee could do. And just, I just think we could get the ball rolling and, and just have.
Task force.
And then, a task, there you go. Get a task force together on it, and then, you know, it could include the downtown business owners, I feel, and, you know, maybe chamber, and, and then, you know, have, bring whatever ideas from other communities together, and say, this is, you know, four or five, you know, possibilities, what do we think we want to pursue from there? So, if anything, but I just feel like we need to take that first step.
Mm-hmm. I think, I think those are some good suggestions, and I think formulating a task force that includes various members of the community, I think is a good idea.
Okay.
As well as business owners.
Right.
Right.
Well, and, right.
That's what I meant by various members of the community, all different kinds.
And, and the other process, hang on real quick, Karen. The other part of it is, we want to include those people that might, you know, that have those empty storefronts.
Yep.
If they're willing to participate, we need to hear what they have to say. Karen?
So, you've got two business owners sitting right here, so we wholeheartedly agree that this needs to be worked on, but does the village not have ordinances already in place for upkeep and stuff? I remember getting notices in the mail when I had weeds growing in my parking lot.
Oh, very good, that, and I mentioned that one, unkempt property.
And it's not going to be enforced anymore?
But it's, but it deals with the exterior.
Right.
I don't think we can, we have anything that controls what the.
But I mean, even that would be a big step, because the back parking lots are horrible, and a lot of that stuff seems like it used to be addressed and isn't currently, and I didn't know, I don't know what ordinance is that, you know, I used to get email, I, I used to get a letter saying, your weeds, you have too many weeds in your parking lot, you need to clean it by X time, or we'll fine you $50.
Wow. Well, I know there's, it's unkempt, unkempt property or something.
Yeah, we have weed ordinances.
Weed ordinances.
Okay.
Yeah.
You know, because that, because that contributes to pollen and those types of things.
Rodents and all that.
Right, rodents, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, if it's just a, a parking lot that's not paved, I don't know that we have an ordinance that can address that.
No, it wasn't, it was, it was specific to, you know, overgrowth of weeds and things like that.
Right, yeah.
I just don't see that being enforced anymore, so I didn't know what was going on with that, if it was just a matter of manpower or.
Oftentimes, it's when the village gets complaints, then we go out, you know, don't always have the staff to go out and look for it, but if it's brought to our attention, you know, we act on it and send letters.
Okay, thank you. And as business owners and chamber members, we'd be happy to be on your committee.
Okay, very good. Task force.
Okay.
And if you guys have C concerns that you're concerned about, call the village office.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
I'd be willing to be on that committee, I'll volunteer right now, because that's something that I think we've, we needed to.
We've been waiting too long for this.
Yeah, we have, there's buildings with tarps, nothing, I, I understand it, I just don't think it's fair to the adjoining property owners, you know, foundation issues, and, you know, I understand, you know, the economics, but I, I know what's, you know, working in that, what we have right now is not, so I'd like to be on this task force.
Okay, very good.
My mind kind of goes to the legality portion of it, I mean, how, how punitive can we be, especially to business owners that aren't even from our, from Cambridge, you know, it's.
Doesn't matter, they own property here.
Right. Doesn't matter, they don't own, they own it.
Well, it might matter, that's why we gotta do the research.
Well, true, true.
Right, I mean, might.
And private property.
Yeah.
There are property rights.
We're limited, huh?
You're correct, you're correct. But we are a taxing authority, and so, we might, it's a possibility, it's, it's been done, done elsewhere.
Right, there's a precedent.
But I, I didn't find any examples in Wisconsin, but I haven't done hours and hours of research, I spent maybe two or three hours on it. So, okay, moving on then, thank you, we'll, I'll put something together on a task force, and we'll bring it to another meeting. Leave donation policy, personnel committee, so.
Do you wanna, do you wanna?
Um, it's come to.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, guys.
Karen, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you guys.
Thanks, us too.
So, these first two kind of go hand in hand. It's come to light, the village doesn't have anything in place for short-term disability for employees. The leave policy that was put together, that the personnel committee did recommend approving to the village board, would let staff donate sick and vacation time to an employee who has exhausted all of their leave, has medical issues themselves, or immediate family that they need to be caregivers, or be there for. It does limit donating up to 80 hours, or 50% of your accrued time if you have less than that, so people aren't using all of their accrued time. Recipients could receive a maximum of 12 weeks per year. If you donate and it's not used, it could be returned, or it can stay in a bank for future use for people.
That, that was my question, number 12 says, donated, any unused donated time will be returned to the donor, so at what point do you know it's unused? Oh, you mean this is on like a case-by-case basis?
If, it could be, you know, if.
Because you're generally donating for a particular person.
So, let's say Barb, let's say Barb donates 80 hours because Lisa has a surgery coming up, and Lisa has used up all of her vacation.
Okay.
Well, Lisa got released, she thought she'd need two weeks off, but the doctor said you can go back after one week, so Barb had donated 80 in anticipation of, of Lisa needing 80, turns out Lisa only needed 40.
So, this is on a case-by-case, it's not like a pool that anyone can pull from?
Yeah, it can be, you know, so if, like we said, if Barb had more vacation and donated the time and it's not used, she could get it back.
But not used at.
If it's the end of the year.
End of the year, maybe you'll settle up at the end of the.
If it's a use it or lose it, and I have three weeks of vacation I haven't used, that could go in and then stay there permanently, as we're starting it, you know. Once this pool is established, there's gonna be time in there. We're looking, starting it, you know, want to get time in there so it can be used, if it's not used, it could be given back. At the end of the year, if.
Okay.
If we have time that we're gonna lose anyway, put it in there, it's there for future use then.
So, it is, it is kind of a general pool, but you could also give it on behalf of someone needing it? Okay.
Yeah, and it would be, you know, if two people give, we're not gonna use all the time from one person first, it would be divvied, you know, prorated.
Okay.
For how much is given.
Okay.
So, if time is given back, it would be given back.
So, you think you can work out those details without getting too complicated?
Ultimately, like we.
It's a nice little spreadsheet.
Sounds kind of complicated.
Ultimately, there's going to be a pool that's gonna carry over time. But starting it up, it's a little more intricate, getting it started.
And partly because we didn't have a short-term disability, short-term disability policy in place. This is sort of, it's gonna bridge it.
I think it's a great thing, I mean, I have no problem with it.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the leave donation policy.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, under.
Now, let's discuss.
Under discussion. So, this went before personnel yesterday.
Yep, and we, and Kathy did attend the personnel meeting.
Oh.
By phone.
By phone, yep.
Okay.
And, so, and it was approved unanimously.
Okay.
So, all of us were behind it. There, there was one item that we had asked Lisa to take a look at, and that's item number four, where it says that the recipient must provide written verification. We were gonna leave that as is, because quite frankly, if you have, needing time off because you're a caregiver, you're not gonna get that person's doctor to give you a note.
No, good point.
And so, you know, those are just minor little things that we.
Because this is for family need, too, not just.
I did look into it a little, all the policies I've seen do have some language pertaining to that, for FMLA, a doctor will provide a note without giving medical information saying, yes, this caretaker for this situation.
Okay.
Okay, good then.
Or you could just add the words for personal use, you know, but.
Like we said, too, we're a small enough staff.
Can work out.
We know when somebody has a family member who's, you know, sick, it's not that we have 300 staff, and we don't know if Joe Smith's mother is sick and he's taking care of her, you know.
Right.
We're small enough, we do know what's going on, yeah.
So, I think it's a wonderful thing that if you guys are, you know, willing to donate into it, that's, that's great. You know, some businesses do this, a lot of them don't. Yeah, Chris?
I got a question on who delineates who gets to draw from this fund.
The person.
Who's the approving?
There are forms here to fill out.
Okay.
They would need a doctor, like we said, especially for your own, say, a doctor's note saying, yep, they have medical needs, they're off of work for this time, and when we expect them to be able to come back, that would come to the administrator to look and verify.
So, the buck, buck stops at the administrator?
Yeah, so they would have to fill out the application requesting to use.
All right.
Yeah, it's kind of a good talk.
And it wouldn't have to come before the personnel or this board?
Nope.
Mark, you had a question?
Yeah, and, and maybe I'm not picking up on this, but I understand if there's specificity, you've got, you've got a donor and a donee, and that, that makes sense. If you don't, if people are just contributing these hours to this, to this pool, and it's not used at the end of the year, then those hours go back to the person who contributed, or do they stay within that pool and accumulate year after year?
That's kind of what I was getting at earlier.
We're looking to accumulate, you know, we're starting this, we're looking to accumulate it. Right now, I'd anticipate, especially early in the year, if we donate vacation time and it's not used.
Take it back.
Yes, it could come back. Um, you know, the goal is, though, if we're not gonna use it, and we're losing it anyway, keep it in that pool, it's not costing the village anything, because all of the employees are budgeted for full-time throughout the year, so it's not costing anything.
Right.
Um, it is us as staff.
You got another administrative burden.
See, yeah, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I agree with it's not costing anything, because what you're doing is, they're not using it, it's, it's really zero for them, but it's still an obligation that the village has to honor those hours.
Going into another year, they've already been budgeted.
But they're budgeted, Mark.
They're budgeted.
Right.
It's more us as staff saying, you know, people are gonna need surgery, they need surgery, they're gonna be gone, that, yes, we'll give our time, so you still get paid, we're a small staff, we're covering when they're gone anyway.
Yeah.
You know, Dan's gonna have knee surgery, he's gonna be gone two to three months. He has built up sick time to cover that, but we as staff are already talking, how are we covering when Dan is gone? But it's not costing anything. He's already budgeted to get paid that whole time. If somebody runs.
It's gonna cost more if you bring somebody into a place.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Where, where it could cost a little bit, and it's not much, is if someone that makes a lesser salary donates an hour, and someone that makes a greater.
No, it is hour per hour at the recipient's pay, so.
Right, so if you have a recipient that has paid more, they're, they're getting, they're getting more.
But they're already budgeted for that.
But it's already budgeted to them.
Their pay is already.
Yeah, but once they run out of their own hours, they're not budgeted for more.
So, so Lisa's, Lisa's budgeted to work 20, 80 hours a year. That's in our budget. If she is out 80 hours because of, of sick time, and she uses sick time, we've still already budgeted that 80 hours. We aren't budgeting an additional 80 hours, we've already budgeted that 80 hours. So, so it, so we could, we could have gotten money, we could have gotten a windfall by not having to pay her those 80 hours.
That's what I'm saying, it would, it would impact the budget the other way, if she took time without pay.
Right, right, then she'd take time without pay.
Right.
Yeah.
But, yeah, but that's not.
But that's a windfall.
Right.
That's, that's, again, the dollars are already budgeted.
But we'd rather not have our staff have to do that, so.
Yeah, it's already budgeted, the, in the long run, it can save money, that I'm not accumulating as much sick time because I've donated, so if I retire, there's less sick time going into our health retirement plan that we have.
There you go.
I thought of that one yesterday, too, and I'm like, yes.
You know, if, all of our full-time staff are budgeted to be paid 20, 80 all year, yes, we'd save money if they have to take time without pay.
Yeah, but.
But do we want to do that to our staff?
But is that how I want to save money? No, I want to take care of my staff.
Do we want to force them to come to work because they feel they can't use up, you know?
Right, right, that's the other side of the coin, you're having people that are dragging themselves in.
They need to recuperate if they're unhealthy, you know.
Right, because they're not getting paid.
Which, which is unhealthy, which causes a safety risk to the village. I mean, if someone has an injury and, you know, maybe shouldn't come to work, and gets injured on the job, that's a whole nother cost for us, because they couldn't afford to stay home.
Chris, yeah.
But the second point here.
Hang on, Ted, Chris was asking.
Just the, just this quick, if, I know it's a small staff, but people are people, and if, if there is ever kind of, any kind of reflection that somebody may be trying to bank the system that we're voting out here, will that be brought up to the personnel committee?
Yes, if there's ever any issues, or, you know.
Okay, or you say, mm, I don't know.
If somebody comes in, yeah, I don't know.
It seems a little, you know how those things happen, you try to see the best in everyone, but, but these situations happen, where, where, okay, I know I, I can count on that, that bank, that's, it should be the exception, not the rule, right?
Yeah.
Ted?
Well, going to the next point is of the state income continuation program, you know, each employ.
That's, that's the next agenda.
That's the next agenda item.
Let's not, let's take this first.
All right, well, I thought we beat it to death, no?
I'm still not clear on, on Steve, you kind of brought it up, if there's a pay disparity between, let's just say, take somebody over there that's helping us with trucks and mowing lawn, and you, they give, let's say, 30 hours, but you're the one that's benefiting from it, so it's 30 hours in it, your salary is not equal to 30 hours at their salary.
Right.
But my salary is already budgeted.
She's still budgeted at her salary hours, you guys.
Yeah.
She's still, she's not getting more hours. She's not getting, she's not getting paid for any hours that she isn't already budgeted for. Period. She, she's only getting paid for the hours for which she's budgeted.
Yeah, but she's not working those hours.
Yeah, you're getting the hours from somebody.
But if I donate to somebody who makes less.
Than we're ahead.
They're budgeted for their pay for 20, 80 a year hours, they're going to get my hours at their pay rate, which is already budgeted.
We might be splitting hairs a little bit there, I don't know.
You might just have to look at the, the donation part as, don't, don't attach a salary to that donation part.
Correct.
Right.
It's hours.
Hours, hours.
That's how I'm kind of looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to.
You just want to call the question?
I think we already have a motion.
Yeah.
Are you going to call the question?
Yeah.
Okay. We have motion second to approve this policy, would, uh, accept the recommendation of Personnel Committee and approve this policy. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
That's good.
I didn't hear Sue down there.
Yep.
Oh, she's very quiet. Okay, very good. It's unanimous.
It's hard to hear sometimes at the end of that too.
Okay, now we'll move on to Village of Cambridge Resolution 2019 dash oh two relating to the State Income Continuation Program, also a recommendation from the Personnel Committee.
So this is kind of tied the same thing, we have nothing in place currently. The State Income Continuation Program does provide, it's a voluntary program if people want to participate, um, provides for short-term disability. Right now, there is a, um, holiday for the payments into this program, so it is at no cost.
You sign up and.
You can participate.
Oh, that's pretty sweet.
It's been going on for approximately three years. The end of that holiday is not, has not been set yet, but.
Okay.
Once the holiday does expire, there is a cost of point two five percent of monthly earnings for those participating by the employer, point seven five percent for the employee. Like we said, it is a voluntary program. We did do a spreadsheet of what the maximum would cost right now, broken down by departments for Village, Water and Sewer and Library, if everybody were to participate. Those of us that have a thousand hours built up probably aren't going to participate and pay $30 a month out of our own pocket. If I, if I have to use up a thousand hours of time, I have bigger worries than, you know, somebody who may not want to, can't afford to spend, you know, so it is strictly voluntary. But it is a program that does need, um, the village to pass a resolution to say, yes, the village will participate.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for inclusion under the Income Continuation Insurance Plan.
I'll second.
Okay. Under discussion, again, Personnel Committee.
Unanimously approved this. We felt, we felt that even, even if all of the employees chose in and the holiday, the holiday goes away, that the actual cost to the village, uh, even water or sewer or the library cost is, is minimal. I mean.
Yeah, these are annual costs.
Right. The annual costs for the, for the four members of the village would be $475.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So, yeah, we're not.
For, to add this extra benefit, we felt was, and again, the holiday's been going on for the last three years, so.
May continue.
Yeah, and, and also, as Lisa said, we, you know, not everyone is probably going to opt in, so.
Okay.
But if it's free, you should.
So, yeah, during the holiday, it's free for everybody too, right? The staff as well as the village.
Staff.
So I guess if you're a no-brainer to take it.
Exactly, for right now.
It's a no-brainer.
But once the holiday ends, they may opt out.
You're going to have to take a look at it, what kind of sick time you have built up and stuff like that, because you never know when that accident's going to happen.
True. Any comments down here?
And if people are collecting on the short-term disability, they would not, they would not be eligible for the leave using the money from the leave bank.
Okay, okay.
So they can't double dip.
No.
It's one hour.
Right.
But this, I believe you, with this short-term disability, you have to be out for 30 days.
Yeah, it is a long-term, you know, one block of time where our leave policy could be, if you have, somebody's going through chemotherapy and needs a day off every week to go for treatments, where this plan is for one block of time, not for.
A day here, a day there.
Like a knee replacement.
Right. Okay, we have a motion second to accept the recommendation of Personnel and approve this, uh, Income Continuation Insurance through Wisconsin Retirement System. It's not money at this point, but it's money potentially at some point.
Not money, no.
No, but I'd say we are committing the village to potential funds.
It doesn't hurt to do a roll call.
So we're going to do a roll call.
Trustee Hollandbeck?
Yes.
Kumbir?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Cunningham, McNally?
Yes.
Brynig?
Yes.
Strass?
Yes. Motion passes. Delta Dental's vision policy add-on, again Personnel Committee, you guys are busy.
You are.
Well, they lost their vision policy under.
Dean Care.
Dean Care.
And I don't think we even realized it.
We did not until, until they went and some people got bills. Um, and so Lisa did some investigation and discovered that Delta Dental had a vision policy that they could add on as well. Um, and so the Delta program, um, under the Dean Plan, it only covered the exam, the, under the Delta Vision Plan, it covers the exam, then plus some dollars towards contacts and glasses, et cetera. So they're getting a better benefit than what they had previously.
Oh, okay.
Under this particular, under this particular plan. Um, and the Personnel Committee once again voted unanimously to, um, recommend to the Board to approve this. So I'll make a motion to approve, um, adopting the Delta Dental, uh, Delta Dental Vision Plan for Village of Cambridge Day.
I'll second.
Okay. Um, and so we're looking at.
What's the added cost?
$14.62. No, that's.
Nope.
So the bottom numbers are the annual, there's two different tiers that we could go with, so broken down between Village and Public Works.
I see there's, okay, 562 for Public Works and Water and Sewer, 185, 96. And these are annual costs, I assume?
Or 216.
Yeah.
Depending on which tier, if they do two-tier or tier four.
Oh, I see. Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay.
And then, and then the cost to the, so, so there, we're, um, the 80, 88% and 12% is the same, village cost versus employee cost is the same we're doing for health, which is, follows the state.
State.
State, what the state is doing as well.
Right.
So that's where that 88 and 12% comes from.
Okay.
And, and again, we, we talked about, you know, you know, the cost of an exam is about $100, and I'm like, well, it'd be cheaper for us to go with $100, but, you know, we're giving them an extra benefit as well because glasses and contacts are included with this as well, so.
At 100% or no?
No.
No.
Probably an 80, 50 or something, yeah. But exams are 100%.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, and again, when we looked at the overall cost of this, you know, for four employees, $562, we felt like that was something that the village could absorb, again, to provide a benefit that they previously had and actually enhance that benefit by doing this.
Okay, very good. You've made the motion already.
I did. Ted seconded it.
I seconded it.
Yep.
Any other discussion down at this end?
I'm inclined to go along with it. The only thing I would ask is that, at the end of the year, when Personnel is meeting with Village employees, that this stuff is all kind of captured, because sometimes people just look at, well, here's my comp and, you know, here's what I could be making elsewhere. Well, wait a minute, you know, there's other things that we're throwing into the kitty here. And if we could recap that for them at that time.
And usually it is an end-of-year decision.
I think we usually do, but this one just happened to slip through the cracks.
And this is one I had reported last meeting, that we sat down with our dean and our Delta reps, because we have had so many changes over the year. It was, you know, the last couple of years, we added the copays and the deductibles, we were never clear on what counts toward those, you know, so they came to help us clarify what changes have taken place.
I think what Mark's getting at is that.
Yes, that this is.
No, well, no, at the end of the year, so where I work, I get at the end of the year, after I pick my benefits, and we go into the next year, I get a recap of my compensation.
Yeah.
And the recap of my compensation is my salary, how much, how much they're paying for, for insurance, whether it's health insurance, dental, all of that.
Oh, yeah.
So if we could create sort of a, one of those for each one of our, our, our staff, I think that would help to show, and I think that's kind of what Mark was getting at as well.
It's more work for our staff, but.
We, in, years ago, um, we oftentimes will get from the administrator, you know, new year, here's what.
Perfect.
Your vacation, your sick time.
Yep.
Everything is for the coming year.
And if you want to make changes, you have to sign off on it and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And so to add that on, wouldn't be that hard to add on to that, on the list.
Yeah.
Okay, good, I like that. That would be good.
Any other questions, comments? Chris? Yeah, no?
No, I think it's something that should be captured though, maybe in, for future employees as well, you know? It's a, it's a heck of an incentive, you know, to.
Yeah.
And the one thing that version two is optional.
Yeah.
Not everybody, you know, people right now don't have contacts, are single, they don't wear glasses, they may say, I don't need this.
Yeah.
You know, so this is again, the maximum, but, yeah, would be included then for the future.
Okay, that's a good, good point.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion second to accept the recommendation of Personnel Committee and approve this additional benefit for, potential benefit for our staff of adding the vision coverage. It is money, this time, it's definitely money, so roll call.
Trustee Kumbir?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes.
Brynig?
Yes.
Hollandbeck?
Yes.
Strass?
Yes, very agreeable tonight. Uh, last item of new business, discussion regarding listening sessions. Uh, Trustee Brunig asked for this, so I'll take it away. Chris?
All right, before the discussion tonight, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion right from the get-go, and then we can discuss it.
Okay.
Uh, so I would like to make a motion to relocate the listening sessions to the Amundson Center for every second board meeting of the month at 5:30 PM to comply with Wisconsin State Statutes 19.83 and 19.84.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so what?
For discussion, do you think we need a full hour?
What, what do those statutes have to say?
Well, I have a memorandum in here for, for everybody that has a copy of the statutes.
Yep.
And in those statutes, it states specifically that if you go down to Section Two, a government body may discuss any matter raised by the public. Uh, when a quorum of a government body attends the meeting of another government body, when any, any one of the members is not also a member of the second body, the gathering is a meeting unless the gathering is social or by chance. And, and a lot of this discussion came, came to be because, and you also have this in your memo, of a email that was sent out on January 25th from our administrator, saying that there was some discussions.
But there wasn't a discussion. Let me clear, let me make this really clear, and I think Lisa was doing her job in reminding us, but there wasn't a discussion. And, and because we all know, we can't discuss village business down there. Somebody raised a question, Steve said, let me write that down, I'm going to take that back. That was all that was said.
So, if I can continue, please.
That's true, that's true.
My question to Steve and Paula, since Kathy's not here, I would pose it to her as well, is who brought up the subject?
Kathy did.
Who brought the topic up?
Kathy, Kathy asked the question.
Which consisted of?
She, she asked the question of, of the reimbursements for adult children being on insurance, and if those reimbursements were being collected.
But Paula, that's a personnel matter.
Ted, don't yell at me.
It was just a question, though, that came up.
But that's a personnel.
And I didn't know.
And we should know that.
Ted, we, we know that. Kathy blurted out and said, oh, and all of us said, we can't talk about it? So Ted said, or, or Steve said, I'm going to write it down and I will bring it up with Lisa. And that was all that was said about it.
Yeah.
That's it. And we went on and we, and, and, and it was just sort of a query.
A passing thing.
Because I was talking about my health insurance and, and what, and what, you know, the different items are that, that Dean and I have to decide when we have to do health insurance. It just came up.
So getting back to the, the point here, the, the listening session is an extension of public comment, and because of that, that, that's why your discussion was in violation of the statute stated. And I have also a copy of, for everybody here, and I believe Lisa has a copy of it too, a memo.
But they, but they were publicly.
From our lawyer, Mary Baling.
They were, they were, they're.
But we posted it.
They're posted there as a meeting.
Right.
As a, so we weren't in violation because we posted it and there was no discussion.
Well, that's, that's another, you know, another point to the, the statutes. If you take a look at the statutes, they state specifically that you, you have to have to post it, if you go down to 19.84, Section Four, uh, separate public notice shall be given for each meeting. Okay, that's exactly what we're talking about here.
We do.
Uh, each meeting of a governmental body at a time and date reasonably proximate to the time and date of the meeting. So what I'm getting at here is, I don't necessarily want to do away with the listening session, but we, we have to go by these statutes, so we have to be able to put down specifically a time and date for the public. And we do not do that.
Yeah, we do.
No, we don't.
After the, after the meeting.
Immediately fell in the meeting.
No, it has to be a specific time and date. It states it right here.
Well.
In the statute.
Well, okay, then let's go back to this, unless the gathering is social, so then does that mean that we can meet socially after, after the meeting, that we can go and meet socially and.
And talk about personnel issues.
No.
We weren't talking about personnel issues.
That's exactly what was, was brought to the Forum.
We didn't. No.
Did I need to read the email?
Lisa made an assumption that we had a discussion. We did not have a discussion. It was a single question that was asked. Lisa, did we have a discussion?
And I was not there. I know Steve approached me and asked, and I responded, and then in the meeting, when he said at the listening session, the three of us were here, yes, do I know if it was just a.
A question was posed.
Yeah.
It was a question, it wasn't a discussion.
Yeah, and.
I think we're making way too much out of this whole thing.
But in the, in the future, seeing all board members could maybe attend, I don't, at 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night, I don't need to go to another board meeting. And I don't want to.
You don't have to be there.
It's optional, you don't have to.
And we're saying, you, you can go there and, and meet, but it shouldn't be sanctioned by the village.
That's right.
Well, when I first proposed this five years ago, or whatever it was, my whole motivation for this is that we meet as a board, we, you know, have our discussions, but we don't really know each other, and I wanted to know people on a personal level. And so I said, I'd like to just, after the meeting, just go have a beer, talk things And so I said, I'd like to just, after the meeting, just go have a beer, talk things over. You know, find out, do you have kids, where do you work, all that stuff.
Where'd you go on vacation?
Ninety, ninety-nine percent of the time, we don't talk any village stuff. It's usually, yeah.
According to the statute, it shouldn't be, and it should be.
At any time.
Anytime.
Well.
Nothing.
I don't know, I don't, I don't think that.
Well, it happens, though, so.
It's that you can't make decisions, but I don't know that you can't discuss.
I don't want, I don't want to talk about any board business.
So.
Out of this room.
So all I was saying at the time, it was Norma, I said, I said to Norma, how can we do this? Go after a meeting, have a beer without violating statute? And she said the only way, she looked into it, she said the only way to do it is that you post it as a meeting because you could have a quorum. So she said, as long as you post it, it's okay. And so I was going on her, at the time she was the administrator, I was going on her recommendation, so that's what we did. So if she didn't look up the statutes properly, I guess I have to apologize on her behalf. But if, I'd say just eliminate it. We very seldom have anybody from the public that shows up. So I'd say, if you're gonna hold them at five-thirty, you're not gonna get anybody here, and I'm not gonna come either.
I can't come at five-thirty.
Yeah, I can't be here that early. So I'd say, let's just eliminate them. If you guys really don't want to have them, just eliminate them.
It's always posted at the bottom of the.
And I'll, I'll go have a beer on my own. If anyone shows up, that's fine.
Yep.
Let's just leave it at that.
Where does that leave the motion, Lisa?
The motion that was made was to change the listening sessions.
Relocate the listening center, listing, listening session for every second meeting of the month at five-thirty.
Yeah, I think, I don't think we need to distinguish or eliminate listening sessions. I think we still need to have transparency for, for folks that do want to come in, but we need to give specific times and dates so they can put it up on their fridge and say, hey, I know I can come down to the village at, you know, seventeen, or at five-thirty on this specific second Tuesday of this month, and I can air my, you know, grievances, or I could give my, my positive input or whatever the case is. I still think there needs to be something there.
And are we gonna be required to be here, or is it optional?
I don't want to be here.
Yeah, I can't be here.
I, I, it's hard enough for me when I'm working in Appleton to get here at six-thirty.
So I guess that's where the question lies, is do you want to be here for the constituents, or do you not want to be here?
We'd wanna be, but we can't be.
Okay, so do you have another?
Not at that time.
Do you have another proposition?
Yeah, that we eliminate them altogether, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that. But you have a motion second. I, did anyone second it? Okay, then I'm gonna call them, call the motion. That we, that we move, maybe Barb can read it.
Unless you want to rescind your motion.
I do not.
The motion was to relocate the listening sessions for every second meeting of the month at five-thirty P.M., and I believe he also said to the community.
To here.
To the Amundson Center, yes.
Could we change that to a quarterly meeting? Not have so many meetings?
I was trying to be amenable to, to what we have established already by keeping it every second.
It's actually the first. It's actually the first Tuesday of every month.
Okay. So I just assume not, not changing my motion.
The first Tuesday every other month is joint law enforcement before.
So that's why I picked the second.
Okay. Yeah, roll call.
Trustee Cumbier.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
No.
Briney.
Yes.
McNally.
No.
Christensen.
No. Motion fails. So if you want to, if someone wants to eliminate the listening sessions, that's fine. They can make that motion, but.
I make a motion to eliminate the listening sessions.
Hold on a second.
So then, so I just want to be clear, if Steve and Kathy and I, or Steve and Sue and, because Sue and Dwight used to come down with us.
And you've come.
Yeah.
Right, so if we want to go out for a beer after a meeting, that's okay.
But no village business.
No village business.
Okay.
Right, it's, no listening, it's not sanctioned by the village.
If constituents come up and talk to us because we've got a quorum there, what do we tell them?
Go talk to Lisa.
And, and I know the listening sessions were created so people could come, speak off camera and so forth. I just want to reiterate, any constituent can contact any board member at any time. It does not have to be at a set location.
That's correct.
At a set place.
Right.
Any questions can be posed to staff at any time, you know.
True.
So situations like that don't happen. If Kathy has a question about benefits, call the office and ask, you know, how is this dealt with? You know, so the listening sessions are there, but constituents can contact any one of you and us at any time. It does not have to be.
You know, occasionally we have people, when the dog ordinance thing was going, and we had people come down and talk to us. But it, it happens very infrequently, and Ken Kemmler, because we're having it at the Keystone, he'll come over and talk to us. And he's not a resident of the village.
No, but he does talk about speeding.
So, so I mean, in a, and really, in a way, he's not even our constituent, so, even though he owns a business.
And Ken shares those concerns with us and.
And I'm fine. If you want to go down there and have a beer and socialize, then, then do it, but it shouldn't be under the auspices of, of being condoned by the village.
And, and again, the reason we did that, Chris, because that was what was recommended to us by staff.
But I'm showing you statutes.
Yep, so if we do it on a social, where does it say, on a social basis?
Unless the gathering is social.
Where does it say that?
Under history, "A quorum of the governmental body attends the meeting of another governmental body, and any one of the members is also not a member of the second body. The gathering is a meeting unless the gathering is social or by chance."
Am I not, do I not have the whole memo?
It's right, it's on the first page, underneath history, the first paragraph.
I see, meeting.
The heading history.
I get public notice, I do not.
Above, the paragraph above public notice.
Oh, here, history, okay. I was looking for a more major. You know, this was just given us tonight, so I really didn't have time to absorb this. Okay, social or by, okay, okay, well then we'll go with that.
Okay, so we have a motion second to, to eliminate our listening sessions after our first meeting of every month. I guess roll call.
Trustee Hollenbeck.
No.
Briney.
Yes.
McNally.
I'm thinking.
End of the discussion.
You know, Mark, you can abstain if you're not comfortable.
I'm gonna do that. That, that is good. I'm torn on this thing.
Yeah, and that's okay.
Christensen. Strass.
No, Ted hasn't voted yet.
Gotta go to meet.
I'm sorry, Cumbier.
Yes.
If on him.
Yes.
Strass.
So where we sit? We have a tie right now?
No.
No.
No, it's, it, no matter how you vote, it'll, it'll pass because there's three who voted yes.
Oh, an abstention.
Yep.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I'm gonna actually vote yes, because I'm in favor of eliminating them if that's the case. So I'll say yes. But we can still meet socially, and that's really what all my intent was. Five years ago, I was just told I couldn't do that without posting it. So now we know what we can do without posting it, and that's fine. So we just won't, yeah.
Good.
Good. Thanks for bringing that up, Chris. Actually makes life simpler for me. Okay, correspondents, we have a couple of different focus documents. Lost my place. One was about the research coming up by the Focus People, Wisconsin, whoever. And the other one was kind of interesting, where, where the property, where property taxes come from. And, oh, one was on the state budget, too, which is just amazing to me because depending how you look at it, you could say either we have a surplus in state budget and a.